Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. We have our very special young students joining us who are going to lead us in the pledge. So if everybody would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice. Nicely done, ladies and gentlemen. First item on our agenda is consent. May I get a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second? Second. Discussion? Great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Just want to point out during our consent, the Carmichael School Board has placed Superintendent Dr. Nicholas Wall on administrative leave. The Board is undertaking a thorough review of its district leadership and believes that its actions today will enable it to complete this review more quickly and in a manner that respects the confidentiality of its employees' personal matters. Because of these confidentiality concerns, the Board will not make further comment on this until it has finished its review. For now, the day-to-day operations of the school district will be under the direction of Dr. Amy Dudley -- thank you, Amy -- the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment, and Mr. Roger McMichael, our Associate Superintendent of Business Affairs. They will both be serving jointly as interim superintendents during this time. Thank you very much for your leadership. With that, if anybody would like a copy of this statement, Mr. David Day will be in the lobby, and you are welcome to join him out there and receive one. And with that, we'll move straight into district discussion. District discussion, we typically do not have an involved district discussion at our workshops, but we have a couple items that are pretty time-sensitive. And the first item is our district calendar for 2018-19. And so, Dr. Dudley, we turn to you for that information.
Yes, thank you. This evening for discussion, I bring to you a proposed calendar for the 2018-19 school year. Typically, what we do is we look at our calendars and do a three-year calendars for over three years. However, because it was time-sensitive, we determined from our committee that we wanted to propose the 18-19 calendar now, and then in the spring, we will propose the 19-20 and 20-21 calendars for Board approval. So, we have a committee of 31 stakeholders, and these stakeholders include teachers, parents, students, administrators, support staff. And what we did was we looked at our current calendar, we looked at surrounding districts' calendars, we sought feedback from other stakeholders as well, and we've proposed a calendar that looks very similar to this year's calendar. The one difference between the two is we moved -- we're recommending that we move the fall break from a Friday-Monday to a Thursday-Friday.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Could you speak a little bit more about moving it to the Thursday-Friday? I know quite a few years ago, we shifted to a Friday-Monday for attendance reasons, perhaps?
Well, I'm not sure if it was attendance reasons, but when we pulled the data, when we looked at the data as far as attendance on that Wednesday before and the attendance on the Thursday before, if it was on a Friday, there was really no difference. The attendance rate ran around 92% either way. And so, one of the -- in the committee, part of the conversation was -- part of it was for the elementary curriculum. The REACH curriculum runs on a five-day cycle, and having two four-day weeks was much more disruptive than having one three-day week. And in the beginning of the year, our first week of school is a four-day week, and that for our secondary students. Our students talked about this, as well as our teachers in secondary talked about, because we have an every-other-day calendar or schedule, it was better for them in the beginning of the year to get used to that block schedule and to have an opportunity to see their teachers twice that week. So for the secondary, the four-day week was in the beginning of the year, but then they were willing to do the three-day week, and it was better for the elementary to do the three-day week at the fall break.
Pam?
Yes, I just have a question. How is the attendance going for Thanksgiving week?
Yes. Well, now that we have the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, it's great. Before we did that, the attendance would dip down into the 80%.
Okay, but they're not taking the whole week?
No, we looked at that, and it's minimal.
Okay.
There are some, but it's not nearly like it is -- it used to be when they would take the Wednesday. But the Monday and Tuesday, it's right around 92-93%.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mike?
I guess I'd just like to thank the committee for putting the next year's calendar on the beginning of their agenda, because I know we've got plenty of people trying to prepare for the next coming year and have been clamoring to hear it. So I appreciate the committee's response on that.
Speaking about the committee, it's my understanding they're going to continue to meet to then plan a two- or three-year additional?
Correct. We'll continue to meet this year, and then in the spring, we'll have another recommendation for the Board to consider as far as for the next two years.
Great. Any other questions? Fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Dudley. We will bring this then to a vote at the October 23 meeting. Next, we have our Carmichael Schools 2018 legislative priorities. And to that, we turn to Mr. McMichael -- to Mr. Kerschner!
Wrong person.
Yes, wrong mister. Mr. Kerschner.
Well, thank you. I've shared with the Board members before this meeting a revised draft of the Carmichael Schools 2018 legislative priorities, and I appreciate the comments that I have received, and those have been shared with everybody except, I'd like to thank Pam, there was an extra word that has now been removed. So, we will circulate for the next meeting when we will take action. Will hopefully be the final draft of the 2018 legislative priorities, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board might have at this point.
Just one. Are you going to circulate with the Board who we're going to share the priorities with? Or are we going to share it with everybody? I know we've, in general, tried to get our message out there to everybody. So will that be our plan again?
We can talk about that. I understand that in the past, there was a letter to all the legislators and then a second letter to those that we were -- we would like to meet with. I believe that our legislators, which are -- which we're definitely going to want to meet with, are also influential, and then will obviously want to talk to those that are on the Education Committees. My personal opinion is probably that I don't, at this point, know that it's worth spending the postage to send one to everybody. I don't think it will have, really, results. We can think about whether we maybe want to email something to all of them. I don't know if that's been done in the past, but I can look into that and report back at the next meeting.
I like the electronic option. Go ahead, Pam.
I know that also in the past, we've included school demographics so that they can look at the layout of the school system and students, numbers of students, and things like that. So, that was often included on the backside of the legislative priorities, so it was all on one page.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then we will be prepared to take action on approving these at our October 23 meeting. And moving right along, like I said, we have a number of special guests who are with us today to present our workshop topic, which is social-emotional learning. And to that, we turn to Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. This evening, we are very excited to have guests from Collegewood Elementary School as well as Prairie Trace Elementary School. So this evening, presenting on our social-emotional learning, we have Mrs. Tammy Thornberry, our Assistant Director for Special Services. We also have Mrs. Kathy Olson, Principal at Collegewood Elementary, and Mrs. Jill Schiff, Principal at Prairie Trace Elementary, and they will introduce their other presenters as they get up. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Thornberry.
Thank you. Good evening. We're very excited to be here. Over the course of the last several years, the district has worked diligently to align areas to promote and include the importance of more than just academic rigor and achievement in recognizing best practices when we work with students. As our strategic goals and strategy map indicates, students are really at the center of everything that we do, and equal weight is given to academic achievement as well as social and emotional well-being. Several years ago, the Curriculum Assessment, Instruction and Assessment Division did a guidance and social work program evaluation and made recommendations and presented those to the Boards that -- the Board that were reflective of best practices and rooted in data. There were several recommendations that were made, but the overarching goal was to align our district-wide student services vertically and horizontally, including evidence-based practices in college and career readiness, social-emotional learning, and academic achievement. Tonight, we're going to highlight social-emotional learning. I wanted to give you a brief definition of what socially-emotional learning is to us. SEL, as we often call it, enhances students' capacity to integrate skills, attitudes, and behaviors to deal effectively and ethically with daily tasks and challenges. There are five core competencies we address in increasing students' capacity, and each school is utilizing SEL curriculum and activities appropriate for the culture of their building. It's not important that we have identical curriculums in all of our buildings. What's important is that each building has the ability to take the core competencies in SEL and apply it to the culture of their building. Those five competencies include self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, social awareness. And embedding that SEL into the classroom and weaving it through all parts of the academic day and curriculum is helping us achieve our strategic goal of student-centered values where academic achievement and well-being are of equal value. So I am going to hand it over to Jill Schiff now, Principal of Prairie Trace, and those special guests who are here with her, who are going to help her present about what SEL looks like at Prairie Trace.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. We're actually very, very excited to share some of the things that we've done at Prairie Trace. Over the past couple of years, about four years ago, we started by introducing Stephen Covey to our school. We did a volunteer book study from the book called "The Leader in Me," and actually, our kiddos are going to pass out one of the books to the Board members. You know, looking back on the past four years, my only regret is that I didn't have this book to help me with my own children, who are now in college in and out. So it really has been, really embedded in now the foundation of what I do every day in our elementary school. But we took a look at -- you can go ahead and pass them out while I'm talking if you want. We took a look, like I said, about four years ago, and we wanted to go farther than just rewarding students for good behavior. That was just scratching the surface of what we knew we could do and what our responsibility was for kids. We wanted to go deeper by teaching them the principles of what it would be, the principles of being a good leader. Things like all types of leadership skills, but collaboration and responsibility, vision, integrity, as well as compassion and empathy. We wanted to deliberately teach our children these things at Prairie Trace. So, as I mentioned, the premises of our leadership initiative have been around the seven habits. And if any of you have read Stephen Covey, the seven habits, which we now have eight habits, but they are to be proactive, begin with the end in mind, put first things first, think win-win, seek first to understand then to be understood, synergize, sharpen the saw, and the eighth habit is find your voice. And we've really taken these habits and embedded them in everything we do, from morning announcements to our curriculum, to setting up the beginning procedures of the school year with -- you know, it's our main focus on our rules for our playground. The adults don't make those procedures and rules anymore. It is -- they are made by the children with these guidelines in hand, so it really has been wonderful. We pulled into our school last year, the eighth habit, which is find your voice, which was very life-changing for many of us. We stopped and took a good look and let the children and the students of the school drive our service week, and every grade level last year used their voice to spend a lot of time and energy on a service project. And then at the end of the week, we celebrated that. And we did several different things. Each grade level was different, but we put care packages together for the military, and this was completely driven by the children. We were able to reach out and use our voices and really help a lot of people in need. So we were very, very proud of that. And like I said, these seven, eight habits are embedded in everything we do all day long. A couple of years ago, we decided to take it a step further because our children were really just thirsty for this. We formed a student leadership team. We had a pretty extensive application process that the kids had to fill out on their own. They had to have adult references. And we decided, we really wanted kids on this committee that really wanted to be there. So we decided to have the meetings at 7:30 in the morning once a month, and we had over 300 applications come in of a population of just over 600 enrollment. So, once a month, we have over 300 kids show up at Prairie Trace at 7:30 in the morning to learn teamwork and leadership skills, anything as basic as learning how to shake someone's hand and speaking to them in public. We've done a lot of activities where, just as an example, we might have a four-block Lego set, and one student makes a shape with the Legos, and then the child behind them, they're back-to-back, and they have to build that same shape using the exact Legos only by their words. So it's teaching them to really listen to other people. There are many, many activities that we do every month, and this is strictly from volunteers. Teachers, staff members, we have custodians involved, we have secretaries involved that get to school early once a month to help out with these activities. We've also now implemented a boot camp that happens in January, and I strongly encourage you to come visit our boot camp because it's pretty amazing. We have several hundred kids after school working on teamwork and leadership skills. We're very happy, with the help of our PTO and an anonymous donor this year, we have become an official leader in these schools, which means that we are recognized by the Stephen Covey people. We have, occasionally, we will have people that come in and look at our building as a model for what they can do at their school. And we have all of the online and resources provided to us from Stephen Covey now. And we also have some additional coaching and training. They came in two days. They brought Gary Magui in to do a two-day-seven habit training to really get deep with teachers, staff, custodians, cafeteria managers, and it was, it was pretty amazing. So, what I would like to do with the help of my teammates here is we're going to do an activity, if we have maybe three or five volunteers. I promise you don't have to do much. But I'd like to give you an idea of, this is an activity that we may focus one month on habit number five. So we want to do an activity to get you to first seek to understand then to be understood. So we did an activity similar to this with our teachers. So, would you like to volunteer? Just three. Three is fine if you don't want to. But what we'd like to do is --
We'll just team up.
That's perfect. That would be perfect. So we'd like one or two of you to turn -- we're going to transform you into a fourth-grade student. All right, you stand right here.
Won't take much.
And then --
You're going to transform me to a fourth-grade student.
And then, you want to be the parent, okay? And then you guys are going to be teachers. So, this, what this is going to be is, is we want to get you to understand the everyday stresses of a fourth-grade student, a parent, or a teacher. So, what our students are going to do is they're going to talk, and what's really great about this is our students came up with the stresses. So on this balloon, one of your stresses as a fourth-grade student are friends. So what this activity, our goal for this is for you to understand, maybe a teacher or a parent, what a fourth-grade student is going through, and to take those things into consideration as you interact with them. So, your goal is to keep all of your stresses in the air without letting them fall, otherwise you're a mess. So each of you will have very different activities. Mom, one of your stresses is kids' activity. And as a teacher, you have student behaviors in your classroom. You have evaluations coming your way. So your goal is to keep all of your stresses in the air. Go ahead, and tell them what your stresses are. We're going to talk. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Very angry. Stop the trials. I'm not going to do this. I'm going to do it. A whole more. Okay. You can stop. So. Now that you have a few more steps on your, on your health club. Thank you. This is, thank you. That was our demonstration. You did a very nice job. So, as you can see, you may not have put yourself in the place of a fourth-grade student before, and as an administrator, sometimes I forget the stresses of the teachers. So, activities like this are really, really healthy for not only kids, but the adults to remind each other what it's like to be in someone else's shoes, to understand what they're going through. We all have an agenda that we want to get done during the day, but everybody is dealing with different stresses. So, we have many, many activities like this that we do with our students and our teachers throughout the course of a school year, and it's really just fun activities to put those seven habits into place. And we have just seen amazing results with our kids. When you walk into our building, the culture of our building is very, very strong. The morale of our teachers, of our families, of our staff is very, very strong, and we think it's directly linked to the seven habit, the eight habits, and how we've embedded them into the building. I also put with your books, a blue sheet, and this is just kind of a very quick definition of how we use simple language to go along with the seven habits with our students every day. And our main goal this year, now that we're an official leader in these schools, is to bring the parents in, to have work nights for the parents, so they can embed this into their home. We've been overwhelmed with the response of parents asking us, how can I do this at home? My child is talking about being proactive. So we want to help parents and extend that vocabulary into their homes. So that's our goal for this year. So, thank you. You're very good sports.
All right. Fast forward here. All right. Well, thank you for having me. Again, I'm Kathy Olson, Principal of Collegewood. Very excited to be here today and thankful for my coach, Megan Schoeff, and my Assistant Principal, Ms. Carmichael, to be here with me, along with my three lovely assistants who are just eager to share our activity with you. We have role-played this, so they are ready. So, let me tell you a little bit about Collegewood Elementary, and we are doing something a little different. Again, what Tammy told us is that it is not specifically about the curriculum, but about matching your SEL with what your school needs and what your clientele and your student body understands in their social-emotional learning. And so, we have gone the route of social thinking and Superflex. And so, for years, Collegewood has embraced the idea of supporting our students' social-emotional needs. As one of the intense behavior schools, we recognize that students need self and social awareness. Students need to be taught self-management, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Elementary school is all about modeling for students and preparing them for the future. Collegewood believes that if we want our children to demonstrate expected behaviors, that we must help them understand what those look like and sound like and feel like. In today's society, children are really never able to put their social skills aside. With children, whether they're on the soccer field, or they're alone in their rooms with their device in hand, social skills truly are essential to their success. So here we have our social detective and our character Superflex. In 2015, when the school board embedded social-emotional learning into our schools, Collegewood decided to expand a current practice that we had school-wide. We have been using social thinking philosophies in our special needs departments for years. The mission of social thinking is to help develop people and their social competencies to better connect with others and to live happier, more meaningful lives. After students have worked through the book, "You Are a Social Detective," and learned core social-thinking vocabulary, they are ready to learn more about self-regulation using the motivational tool, Superflex, the superhero in our minds who helps us defeat social challenges. This curriculum teaches students to adapt more effectively across situations and take control of their thinking to defeat the unthinkables. The unthinkables are imaginary characters that represent common social struggles. The characters on the screen are a few of the characters that we most often see invading the brains of our K-5 students. Superflex is a great problem solver, and he has strategies to help students defeat these unthinkables in order to make each day the best it can be. For example, Rock Brain, our friend up there in the bottom middle, will get a person to only do what he or she wants to do and not allow that person to negotiate with others. Someone suffering from Rock Brain is very rigid in their thinking and only sees things in one direction, a situation in one way. Superflex encourages students with Rock Brain to notice that what they are doing isn't working, to take a deep breath, and remember that being part of a group means that you cannot always have it your way and that decisions can only not be what you want. Superflex and his sidekick, the social detective, can be spotted around Collegewood on any given day. The children seem to know who they think Superflex and the social detective are. I don't know what they're talking about. They have speculation, but I guess that's what makes each day fun. So, as part of our SEL, we have worked through two years of research, training, planning, and initial implementation. I was able to travel to Arizona with two teachers to attend the social thinking conference and meet the author of all this work, Michelle Garcia-Winner. We met her in person. That is our top-right picture there, which was extremely exciting to meet the author of all this curriculum. And we have partnered up with an Avon school to support social thinking implementation. Maple Elementary is a few years ahead of us, and we were very pleased to see, actually, Maple got Blue Ribbon with us this year, so we're excited to celebrate with them in DC here in a couple weeks. So, we must be doing things the right way, and we're doing it together. And we have worked diligently with our staff and students to create a foundation for this SEL and for the years to come. So, we now have an activity for you, and it has to do with your brain smarts. Now, we're going to come to you, and we're going to let you use what's valuable in your own brain right now to help us understand that our brain smarts connect to our social smarts. So, Brain Smarts is an activity that we do at the beginning of each year as each new classroom community comes together to learn more about one another, what we are like and what we're good at, and what skills we have in common and what we are different with our peers. So everyone has a different type of smarts in their brains. Some have computer smarts, school smarts, Lego smarts, math smarts, and some have natural social smarts. Social smarts are knowing specific ways to interact with each other, how to handle conflict, emotional regulation, responsible decision-making, self-management, self-awareness, and relational skills. So after having a discussion about all the different types of smarts we all have, each student fills out his or her own brain to show their personal smarts. We then share with others to find common interests who we can learn from and grow from in our classrooms. So, we are going to go through this smarts activity with you, and then they are going to ask you the essential question of how you think your brain smarts help you with your social smarts. So, ladies, I have Anjali, and I have Si, and I have Mahitha here with me, and they have been assigned so that all of you can participate. So they have you in groups of twos or threes, and we're going to come to you and give out your activity, and they will lead you and facilitate this activity. So, ladies, head on over to our Board members. So after having a discussion about all the different types of smarts we all have, each student fills out his or her own brain to show their personal smarts. We then share with others to find common interests, who we can learn from and grow from in our classrooms. So we are going to go through this smarts activity with you, and then they are going to ask you the essential question of how you think your brain smarts help you with your social smarts. So ladies, I have Anjali, and I have Si, and I have Mahitha here with me. And they have been assigned so that all of you can participate. So they have you in groups of twos or threes, and we're going to come to you and give out your activity, and they will lead you and facilitate this activity. So ladies, head on over to our board members. All right. Well, thank you so much for participating in kind of our kickoff activity. Like I say, this is year two of our implementation. We too, just like Mrs. Ship said, has, have seen a huge change in the way students are treating each other, the way they understand that their actions have reactions, and then in turn are also watching the actions of others. So instead of appropriate inappropriate behaviors now, everything is expected and unexpected. So we talk about someone using expected behaviors versus unexpected behaviors. And so this is again, a common vocabulary that has just grown over the last two years. It's grown into partner classes, buddy classrooms that are teaching each other and mentally are monitoring and, and modeling for each other. So we have just seen this grow, and we absolutely love the idea of social-emotional learning and think it is an absolute core value to help our students in Carmichael Clay Schools be well-rounded. And we're just very thankful that it's part of our curriculum and that we have the ability to create the curriculum that we think is right within our own buildings, to make it our own, and to find what's right for our students. So thank you, and we appreciate your participation.
Well, I'm going to open up the floor to questions. If Pam, we'll start with you.
Yes. I have a question for Prairie Trace. You said that you were doing classes for parents or inviting parents to come in and learn about your curriculum. How are you doing that with your ESL students and their parents who may not speak English?
Well, we're just at the beginning stages of that. So we have what we call a lighthouse team made up of students. And then we also have parents, or excuse me, teachers that are leading that. So we're in the very beginning stages of that. So the meetings are just now starting for that. But that's a good question and definitely something that we'll take into consideration. We thought about, there, we have several of our parents that have reached out to us to offer to help because they've had the seven habits training. So I think in the corporate world, it's used quite a bit.
Yes.
So we've had several parents that were extremely excited about us bringing it to the parents. So, you know, as this group gets together, I think one of our biggest assets will be our parents and bring them in, the parents maybe that were trained in the corporate world to help us do that training and maybe utilize some of that then.
Okay. I would just like to see, you know, that thought about because I know that there are a lot of parents who, they don't speak English as well as their children sometimes, and they need to hear much of what you're doing as well.
Right. And you know, part of that, eighty, what we, one of the biggest things that we've learned is that eighty percent of what we do as adults, our kids can do for us. And so just seeing how we've set things up so far, I anticipate the kids leading a lot of this and doing a lot of the delivery of the, the parent side of it to the parents.
Katie.
I think this is actually probably a question for you, Amy. We were able to hear from two of the schools tonight, kind of what they're doing. Like, could you maybe let us kind of know just briefly what the other elementary schools are doing? I love the fact that, because every school is different, that they can take an approach that fits their best community. So I would just be interested to kind of have an idea, just generally, about what some of our other elementary schools are doing.
Yes. And as far as our elementary schools and also our middle school and our high school, we have SEL embedded, but it looks very different at different schools. We do have some other schools that are looking at the seven habits and seeing if that fits their program in the best way. We do have another school looking at the Superflex as well. And then we have some schools that are really building their own. They're focusing on the different SEL standards, but they're building their own program based on the specific needs of their students. So we have a variety across the district, but all of them, the consistency is, is that they're focused on those SEL standards and making sure that we are addressing it based on the needs of the students.
Lynn.
I have a general question here also for Amy. So we know that bully is a nationwide issue. And is anti-bully included explicitly in this social-emotional learning? Is any school doing that particularly for anti-bully problems?
Well, all of our schools focus on anti-bullying, and they do different programs specifically addressing anti-bullying. It is embedded into the seven habits in that you're working with your other students, your, you know, how do you get along? How do you use your different smarts, as Mrs. Olson was talking about? But also, in addition to that, all of our schools do specifically address anti-bullying, and they have different programs in place that address that each year for all of our students.
My, okay, another question for you, Amy. Each of the schools have such very interesting, a great approach to addressing social-emotional learning. How do they communicate with one another to share some of the findings that they have, you know, experienced and so others can learn from what they're learning?
We have, you know, a variety, especially in our elementary schools, where they work together through our elementary administrator means, where they have time to collaborate. We also have times where teachers will go and visit other schools. And sometimes our coaches will take our teachers to visit those other schools, and they get to see the other practices that are going well in those schools. And so they have those opportunities throughout the school year to be able to really learn from each other and learn what's happening, what's working well, and also work on what's not working well, and how can we work together to solve those problems?
Other comments?
I just want to extend a huge thank you to all of our students, to the families of Prairie Trace and College Wood who joined their students to help us learn a little bit more about what you're doing at your schools for social-emotional learning. Mrs. Olson and Mrs. Ship, it's been a pleasure. And we look forward to learning far more about your schools. And I just, one big, huge plug. College Wood Elementary School is a national Blue Ribbon school as of a week and a half ago, I believe. So congratulations.
Board, do you have anything else you'd like to share this evening? Amy and Roger, do you have anything you'd like to share this evening? With that, I wish everybody a very, very safe and fun four-day weekend coming up on Friday. So thank you. Meeting adjourned.